Until the February 7th, we're going to reach into more by the political leaders of the United States of America and to be well with for which it stands relation under our individual liberty and justice law. At this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? For a second time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? For a third and final time, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, public portion is closed at 6:09.
I've got a brief report tonight, then I'll let Judy introduce our guests and talk about, we're going to talk about the after school enrichment program, which I think are all part of our bigger plan to get kids back to school. You know, already, those are going on right now. We're in the process of planning some really nice programs over the summer. It's included with last year, and we'll be expanding this summer, hopefully. And we want to get more of our high school students involved to work with certain younger kids. So you'll hear more about that down the road. That's coming, but tonight we're going to talk about the current enrichment programs. So first, I want to, I want to thank Ken, who could be here tonight. We had a Zoom meeting. I really did put a lot of time into making sure that not only that we were able to open the modular classrooms, but that we were in code compliance. We worked with the fire department and the building inspectors. And again, I hope down in the near future, if you can please take a ride to the back because those courts are really going to make a lot of extra classroom air. And again, I think the general public will be able to use them, enjoy them. There'll be basketball, there'll be line for pickleball. And I know that's getting very popular, actually doing the League Over Up Lloyd. We're hoping, we actually worked with the park department and said, hey, we're getting calls on this. He should consider it. And so we think that's going to be really popular down the road for
It's twice a day here. I talked to my gang about it today, two times a day.
Yeah, no, and I, and I think that again, when, once the weather gets warm, we can get these courts painted. Painted, the two new courts, tennis courts will also be lined for pickleball. I think it's going to take a while, and I think that's going to be really exciting. A lot of people will be able to enjoy that. So we have that. Again, this building, we're doing everything we can. And Pat, you raised that issue about the limited space here, and are we making good use of it? We really are trying. Again, the other thing that we may look into, if money and funds allowed to, if we'll let you know is we're working with, we're working on trying to give the library, which we should have probably bought in here, to give that a more modern, nicer feel so kids can, you know, hang out with their laptops and charge and read quietly and whatnot. And again, the four, the four modular classrooms that we built helped a lot because we were able to get rid of some of that crowdedness in the library.
The library definitely
You know, what, you know, what really hurts us is that big circulation desk. So we've got some designing that, you know, we could use them either as computer space or whatnot, but it's, it's a lot of wasted space, takes up a lot of room. So hopefully, that's something that's, that'll be coming down the road. The other thing is, you know, as you all know by now, it's no secret. I listened to the press conference and I just give you, I'll give you what I know. Aside from the press conference, which says as of February 28th, it will be up to local municipalities, mayor, superintendents, boards of education to make a decision on the mask mandate. The first call I made was to Attorney Dugus and asked, my, my first question was, if, if the city were to continue with a mask mandate, would the board be obligated to follow it since the buildings are owned by the city? He felt because they're in our charge right now, this is a, off the top of his head, no research, that we would be able to make that decision. So that gives us, I think, a little more flexibility because I don't know what the city's going to do. The second call, I actually received a call from Marie Lewis, our health director. Said, did, did I hear the news? Yes, I did. I'm glad you called, Marie, because I was going to call you first thing in the morning. My, my question to her was, you know, she, she obviously likes the fact that there's going to be some flexibility, but my question to her would be, are, are you going to be receiving guidance like they did as to last year when we first reopened school? As to the, you know, red, green, and yellow. In other words, this is the guidance. She was going to ask that question. There's a conference call tomorrow, which, you know, in the end, it's going to be a board decision, I believe. So, so that's something that we're going to have to address. We'll get you the information, but I think the board is going to have its flexibility to make a decision. I think as long as the numbers come down, you can try it and go backwards. That's my personal feeling. Let's see where we are in a couple of weeks. I've already talked to Kevin. Obviously can't make a decision tonight. But if need be, we don't meet until four weeks from today, which is the 7th. If there's more information I can provide you with and get you, and as we get closer to the deadline, you know, if, if need be, we'll call a special meeting and, and, you know, have that, have that discussion. And that's all I really know because, you know, get heated, come on till almost 4:20 or so today. And I was just, you know, trying to do it as I got here. All right, that's all I have unless you have any additional questions regarding the mask issue or anything else that's going on. Again, I think there's a lot of good things happening here. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll get through the, we'll get through the mask mandate too.
I just, we talked about this this morning, but the fact that we did do a lot of care policies in both schools in terms of cleaning the vents with other kinds of
Many years, yeah.
That the, we like to guarantee more filters, I think that we've done a lot to assist with better air quality in schools. So I think that's actually some of the main characters that need to be recognized. I know you said you love it. Okay, and some people about the high school.
About this, what happened was Pat, it was the year, it was the summer of 2020 when we to, yeah, 2020, when we were first reopening after the mandated shutdown. And, you know, Ken will, I should mention this too, and he can answer specifically, talk to specifically the system that's in place, but to make a long story short, the message was, and I heard it from Gilbane, our construction company and the experts, was that if that filtration system is working as efficiently as it can, it's better than being able to open the windows. But he can talk to that better than I can. In fact, one of the things I should have mentioned is next meeting on the 7th, I want to do a similar special duty. Because for those of you that don't know, we opened up the new wing at West Haven High School. The move took place a couple of weeks ago and, again, I think it's important that you guys see the, this, the school as it opens up. So I'm hoping, I, I mentioned it to him out the hallway. I'll firm it up with him. If he gets it in his book, we'll be good to go.
I think once, once we announce the decision, I think that the stay home when you're sick rule of thumb needs to be reinforced in whatever communication that we send out just because, you know, I know it's hard for parents when their kids are homesick when they're working and whatnot, but if we're going to consider making a mask mandate lifted in our buildings as well, then we really need their cooperation to make common sense decisions to keep the rest of the school population healthy. So I would like to see that included in our communications.
I think that's, that's very reasonable and it's something we should be, should be constantly reinforcing anyway.
Yep. And something along the lines, I mean, I mean, we've all been paying that new tax over the last year for the family medical needs, back to camera, the tax needs for it. Maybe the patients will leave, but hopefully will apply for that containment or we need to save them for more time for the extended time, yep.
I think
I'm always more for too much information than not.
Yeah, and I think those are nice suggestions because I think the other thing we need to do is to, we need to make parents feel good about that the school system is kind of looking out for you and, you know, this is some, some advice that we'd like you to consider following or it may help you out. One of the biggest challenges that, that we've seen this year, or I've seen and experienced personally, is when the darn daycare centers close and people get stuck without, without daycare because, you know, they're either our employee or, you know, they're, they're parented by other kids in the school system. They can't get them, get them into school because they're watching their little ones. And so that's been, that's been a very difficult issue.
It's, it's also ironic to point out that people have not been healthier other than COVID when everyone was wearing a mask and washing their hands so much and using antizymes. So all those things help with many other infectious agents rather than just pollution. So we will continue on.
Yeah, one other thing that I actually should have made a copy, I forgot, but there's been no decision, but I know the C I A C also sent a letter to the State Department of Health today. It's probably up online if you go to the cast C I A C dot org, where they're requesting that kids be able to play without, without masks on. So there, there has not been any answer, but it's something that, you know, if you're interested in, go on the, go on the website and I'm sure the link to the, to the letter is there.
Are we just talking about the ability of people that do have special circumstances? They have a family member that's down in academia and they really feel like they get comfortable with 1,800 people.
We, you know what, Ann, that's a really good question. And right now, we have had, we've had several requests. We've tried to convince them that school is still the safest place. And I'm, I'm knocking on wood right now, we got it down to one family. And we, I don't want to say we made them, that family jumped through hoops, but we asked them to provide us with a lot of documentation prior to saying, okay, we're going to be able to offer you remote learning. But there is a limited exception as of now where, you know, if you provide that, yes, but we've got, we've got, we've actually got one family right now, believe it or not. It's the only one that I know of that we are providing, providing a remote learning plan to. And I'm hoping, you know, I'm hoping that down the road, they reconsider that because my fear with that, I think I've told you guys this, is that unfortunately, when, when do we say it's now it's time to come back to school? And unfortunately, that kind of a program, it's not a bad thing, but it's not the same as coming to school.
Say they had something, there was some other issue, you know, that they
Oh, yeah.
They're full bound, they're actually together.
Full bound, if they had a 504 medical plan, we would most have to make those exceptions, yes.
I think another, I'm sure that Marissa and Joe will include this kind of information in their outgoing message. But I think what people also need to realize is that, you know, mask mandates put in place at the beginning and during this pandemic were people are wearing cloth masks and, you know, tissues over their face for lack of a better analogy. And now there's a much more availability for N95 masks where you can protect yourself. So we don't, we can protect ourselves better rather than having to protect each other. So I think that's also one.
Yeah, we've
You're not going to deny someone to wear a mask at school if they feel uncomfortable and want to protect themselves. So, so that might be another good point to, you know, baby steps into, you know,
We, we have plenty of masks, we have plenty of masks to give out. We've been very fortunate when we purchased them back in the fall of 2020. Any that, you know, what we received are a lot of the state, you know, working even with our emergency operation system of the city. Joe Soto's been great. He's in charge of the emergency center. So, you know, we'll be in good shape and, you know, again, my opinion is that, you know, let's see what happens. But let's not be afraid to try it and take the, maybe take the next step. You know, again, that's something for ultimately, and I, and what I also will, I, I'm hoping by then that Virgin Moses will send out some advice and guidance as to, you know, things that we should consider. I know one thing we, we shouldn't consider, or this is not for Virgin Moses. I received something from the superintendent today regarding, regarding liability. Well, there's liability on both sides and, you know, it, it may be, I don't want to say this, because I don't want to walk back what I'm saying because I'm, I'm all for, you know, giving it a shot, but you may be more liable. If you're going to get sued, it's better, I almost, again, I don't want to say this the wrong way. It's better to get sued by the anti-masters than the masters in case someone gets sick. But that's just, that was just a rough opinion that I got when I was reading something today. Please, I don't think it should sway you from making a decision.
Just one more suggestion that I would like to see with, in terms of baby steps. If we don't get guidance from the state or even from our, from our local health department, wouldn't it be something that we could consider a school by school free, yellow and red kind of dictation as to what the numbers look like in your school or how it's spreading in schools or what that looks like in terms of maybe we should dial that, allowing the children to take their masks off.
I think you can set those parameters, Kim. I think the difficulty with something like that is I've got three, you know, we hear this all the time, whether it's even from the registration to lunches and things is how come? I, I don't understand. Tell me why my daughter Seth Haley has to wear the mask, but my son at Carrigan doesn't have to wear the mask. In West Haven High School, nobody wears a mask. You know what I mean? I think that would be the challenge of that. I think consistency, just when you set a rule, you try to live up to that rule as best you can. You know, the other thing that, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to, I've got my opinions. I can guide you out and advise you, but I would be more worried about, you know, if you, if you take the stand against removing the masks, you know, it's difficult then to discipline kids who really believe or their families are telling them or that there's a group of pretty good kids that are going to back us into a corner and then we're going to have to enforce something that we really don't want to enforce. So I think those are the kinds of things that we, you know, you as a board and the superintendent need to, and our administrators who are going to say, hey, you know, how am I, you know, and this happens all the time, by the way. How are we supposed to do that? Or how are we going to enforce this now? We can't just start doing this, you know, March 1st, you know, much easier to do in September, whatever. So I think those are all the things that need to be taken into consideration before you ultimately make a decision. But I think consistency is important and I, and again, I really believe that, you know, do we want to start punishing kids for doing what they, for the most part, what they believe is right? Because I think that kids, especially at the high school level, who lost a lot, you know, in the way of sports and tournaments and, you know, you know, dances and things like that, you know, we, we want to start giving them back. You know, and I think, again, I think this school system, our administrators, with your support, we've done a really good job of keeping the schools open and giving them what we can. In fact, I told Pat and Jennifer today, I said, I, I could have been the governor last year when I was letting two parents home and away into the skating rink, which was like a, a big deal to people. But I think it was the right thing to do and I think in a rink that holds 1,000 people to allow 60 or 70 to spread out safely wasn't that hard of a decision to make.
I think all along we have been making sensible decisions based on science and I think that will continue to do so.
I, I agree, you know, and again, whatever, whatever we decide, we'll make sure our administrators are on board. They'll have their input, you'll, you'll have your input, obviously, to say, finally say it to what's going on. All right, so that's all I could tell you about masks. I wish I had more to add to that. You know, I've got my opinion and maybe I've said too much, but I think we're going to do, we'll do the right thing by our kids and our families. Judy, what, what, sorry, Patrick, any questions?
You know, with all the hostility and their politics about masks, my, my if it is our, our, we can, they have one decision, one of the decisions. I think I think to deflect beyond those hostility towards all of education and face would be much better for me to go undercover of the city, I think, instead of, you know, we making the decision.
You know, again, that was, again, Patrick, that was the first question I asked Attorney Dugus tonight. And he didn't have a definitive answer, but right now he feels because even though the city owns the buildings, they give them to us to, to educate kids, it would be off the top of his head without doing the research. He feels it would be a board decision. But that's a, that was a, here's a, here's what I think right now, but he'll give it to somebody to research because, you know, you know, Birchman Moses represents, you know, 25 to 30 boards of education. We're all going to be calling them with the same question. I'm sure they're going to be sending out some kind of directive, Vandoor memo. Patrick?
So in response to the needs of our returning students, especially our students that were doing distance learning, we wanted to be proactive and we did assess the children and we decided we would start with our smallest, our youngest children in the elementary school.
I was going to say. You just want a new sound system, you're going to bite.
So anyways, we decided to start with our six elementary buildings and we, I talked to Marissa and we got Alisa, who's done a lot of programs and different things in the school system to get on board. We started planning, we moved from one building to another. And Alisa will explain the whole way we set this up. We decided to start with our second grade, do around with them, third and fourth. We're presently doing, we're in the middle of the third right now. And the response we got from the teachers, we did like two weeks in a building and move on. Two weeks in the building and intense work after school with the children. And we've gotten very good response from this, that the children are really gaining. We had our EL students involved in this, small groups, Alisa will give you the numbers and size. We had a lot of teachers on board after school to help out with this, which was great because, you know, it's a different challenging year. And we are continuing into the spring and we will tell you later also what we're planning for our summer program. I think the one that we have going on now, the third grade one, is very interesting. We have some nice resources we're using for them and this was all part of our grant that we had from us. So with that, Elise Rice, I keep calling you Rice, sorry.
So I've been sort of coordinating the after school program. We did, like Judy said, we did two weeks in each school. So the weeks kind of overlapped, so I did, we started with Forest. So we did, I would go for the first week in Forest and then the teachers would sort of just take over from there. The second week in the, the second week of Forest, I would go to Seth Haley and that's sort of the way it went on. And we went through all the elementary schools. We did second grade, we did dinosaurs, so they did research. They wrote an opinion essay, they wrote, they did a little research and, and had, they had, I'll show you pictures, but they had, they made a diorama of a dinosaur habitat. They did all kinds of fun activities, but they were always being exposed to the literature and discussing the literature with their teacher and doing a little bit of research. Then we sort of switched gears for third and fourth grade. And we kind of went through this, using STEAM, so we're doing Lego kits. And the students are doing push and pull forces, so the third grades are starting at one level and then the fourth grades will pick it up a little bit higher. The, the students love it. They were cheery today at Washington when I walked in with the Lego kits. And the teachers are saying that the students are really enjoying it. They're getting a lot out of it. The principals are saying that the students enjoy it. So as a matter of fact, we had one student last year, last week who heard about it. So he decided he was just going to stay after school one day and join the group. So unfortunately for him, we couldn't let him stay, but, so it is definitely the word is spreading. We had, I want to say, I do have the numbers in there. I want to say there were about 88 second graders and we had something like 98 third graders. And I don't know where we're going with fourth grade yet. I'm still trying to get, you know, the numbers and things. But we made it so that there were never more than six students in a group at a time because we wanted to keep it as small as we could so that they would get the most out of it. So I just did this little slideshow with some pictures from the second and the third grade. So, yeah, so there were 88 second grade students. And then that's just a little thing about what I, kind of what I just said. Oh, that persuasive essay was they were trying to convince their parents to let them have a pet dinosaur. And it was funny to hear that. Some, some, absolutely not. They absolutely did not want a pet dinosaur. And then others were, you know, they thought it was the greatest thing. So these are just some pictures of their dioramas and they're working with the teachers. You know, they're kind of small. Sorry, I tried to get as many pictures in as I could. And then this was just, they did like a little din, you know, they made a little dinosaur with pasta and then their fossils are the ones in the middle with the little dishes where they, we had clay on and then they made the little fossils with the pasta. And then this is their write, some of the samples of their writing. So they actually had, you know, a planner, they had to have a planner and then they had to, they had to write the persuasive essay. And then the first one is their, the research one. So they had a planner for that as well. And they made little dinosaur masks. They had fun. They really did. It was good for them. A lot of socialization going on and they, I just feel like they, they just lost over the last few years. So, yes, we have 97 third grade students. And then these are some of the things they're doing with the Legos. They were making little carts and they were racing them down always to see which went first and, wow, which one? And just how different things move, just forces in motion. And like I said, the fourth grade will be forces in motion too, but like a, a level up. So we're beginning, I'm just, I just, last week, I think it was, I sent out the letter to the, or the email to the fourth grade teachers asking them, they provide a spreadsheet, a list of students that they think would benefit from this program, whether they're ELs. A lot of them were like full time distance learners last year. Some of them were special ed students. So they send out, they, they sort of fill out this list for me. Then I send them the permission slips to send home to their parents. And we don't tell anyone they can't come, so anybody that gives us the permission slip back can come. And we've had students sort of join halfway through. That's okay. I'm not, you know, I'm not going to turn anyone away as long as I can keep those numbers kind of small. So that's it.
Great job.
Yeah, don't say.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we did, um, two, so it's seven weeks for second grade. And that ended right before Thanksgiving. And then January 2nd, we started third grade and next week will be the last for third grade. It's seven weeks again. And then I want to say it's April 28th, we start again in fourth grade and we go seven weeks for the fourth grade. But Judy and I were talking today, toying around, trying to throw in a fourth and fifth grade next year. I think if we do that, we might, because we're, to do the seven weeks, it's kind of a time crunch, you know, between days off and things like that, because we tried to keep it work through, I tried to work it around like, so nobody would be sort of left out on Thanksgiving week, for instance, and things like that. So I had to play around with some dates, but maybe if we did fourth and fifth grade together, since they're at the same school, it might work out that we could sort of squeeze them in between five and six, sorry, pretty sorry, between, we could squeeze them in between the third and the fourth day the next day. It's four days a week for two weeks, I think. Well, depending, so it's like Wednesday, we have a half a day, so we're doing Friday this week. But we did, we didn't do like if there, if we had a snow, snow day, we couldn't make it up just because of the bus schedule and trying to get the parents set, so we couldn't do that. So a couple of times the kids had to miss out.
It's great. The nice part of office is that she did get staff working on curriculums ahead of time and planning.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. It was really, it was staff looking at the needs of camps and saying, you know, how can we incorporate that into a project-based way of doing language, math and science?
Judy and Marissa sent out a, like a questionnaire so the teachers could respond to what they felt the students needed the most. So then we were able to sort of hear the plans.
Did you send anything to Lego? Like all the success Lego stories that you had, you know, all the fun things?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Did you send like these great stories with the Legos to Lego?
Oh, no, I didn't think of that.
Then you might get something from Lego. My niece is.
Oh, that's a good idea.
My niece is their intellectual property attorney.
Oh, I like that idea.
I put the fun in dysfunctional.
That's a good idea.
So with that, we are planning our summer programs, starting to plan our summer programs. And we're going to extend some of the things that we did this year. We're going to add some more things. So I'd like to just briefly give you a preview of what we're going to be doing. And then in May, I hopefully want to go in detail with you on exactly what it's going to encompass. So I'm going to call the coordinators up.
We're starting the planning for summer camps and we were very successful last year with, we did ELs in science and we did English learners. So we expanding them a little bit. We are re-doing the camp at Seven Rock, which is for incoming first graders to fourth grade. We had over a hundred and sixty students last year. We're increasing the number to two hundred. Students are, they are Monday through Friday from nine to one-thirty. And they are working on oral language development with the use of science. So they're hands-on activities. They do field trips. We're trying to do field trips this year. Last year, we brought in robotics. We brought in the West Steppers to work with the kids. It was all around the oral language development. We also are doing the same thing at the Seventy. We did not have that last year. We had an influx of refugees, as you well know, especially Carrigan. So it's going to be incoming seventh graders and eighth graders. And we're doing the same thing at the high school, where our numbers are high. They went from one-twenty, one-seventy for EL, for the EL department. For science, we were very successful with the forensic camp. The, we had eighth graders and ninth graders coming last year, incoming eighth graders and incoming ninth graders. They got to work with forensic teachers, Sherry Mitchell and her team. And also, we had a lot of guest speakers, such as the medical examiner, FBI, police department. This year, we are shifting it down. Neil, we can do something with fifth and sixth grade. So we are actually looking at incoming sixth graders and seventh graders for, for science. So that is science and EL.
Actually, I have a handout for you for ESY. So for ESY Extended School Year, we house our program at Seven Rock every year. We also have our students come from nine to one every day. Transportation's provided. Our students do a number of activities, not only ELA and math activities, but we have in-house field trips. We try to incorporate MEL. We do a lot of other fun. We have the West Steppers, oh, movement and learning. It's learning activities with physical activity. Our students love it. But we try to incorporate all these things with our theme. Every, we have a theme for ESY Extended School Year. And this year, it'll be animal kingdom. So we'll be incorporating all our activities. Animals, we're hoping to have curious critters come in. But we'll see, we do service approximately two hundred students every year, pre-K-12. So it is, it's always, we always look for volunteers if anyone's interested. We have provided book fairs with vendors providing us with sensory toys for our students last year, which was wonderful. So they could build, not only build their own libraries, but also get some fun activities for them to take them.
Okay, so for reading, there is a Public Act 6620 that has mandated a reading program. Unfortunately, the state has not come out with the parameters. I do know that I'm going to be required to offer a program for K through fifth grade. They have indicated that it has to be students who are reading below proficiency, but they haven't defined what proficiency is and they haven't defined how long this has to go and how often we have to offer it. So at this moment, I do have reading people who will be supporting a program of this nature. And we will probably be either embedding it in one of the programs that is offered so that people will be able to get reading at that location because there will be other camps offered and we will be looking to catch as many people as we possibly can. Once the state gives us the information, they are waiting for someone to come in for the newly created literacy intervention position that they have at the state level. They feel that that is going to all, sort of, the person will be able to make those kinds of decisions and give that information. So once that's happened, we will know what we're doing for reading. But then also, we will be offering, I do know that we will be doing drama camps. There's one Carrigan and Bailey, and we're waiting to hear what else is planned for that. So that's reading and I will now turn it over to Matt.
For mathematics, we had a planning meeting today. We are targeting right now, we're starting with our five-eight students. That has been where we've seen the largest gap. And looking at partnering with Legos, partnering with the Eli Whitney Museum to really do a project-based thematic week or two of camps. So we are in the process of communicating out to staff to see if they're available and interested in working those weeks. We will have a group of math coaches and teachers that will develop the curriculum and the activities during that summer camp. Marissa and I had been talking about partnering with Community House to also integrate some numeracy stations and activities, project-based, into some of their summer camps. The other thing that I spoke to Judy about was, we're talking about summer camps for our students, but also thinking outside the box and possibly offering some summer camps, workshop type of sessions for our teachers around instructional strategies, around project-based learning, around different ways that we can engage, more actively engage our students and help close that gap. So those are a couple of things that are in the planning stages. And as we have more info, we will share that with you. So last year, when we started with the administration opportunities for our students, we really tried to offer something that every student would really gravitate toward. And I think that, you know, the administration and the teachers really came together beautifully and tried to find not only things that students wanted, but things that teachers were excited to teach. So we really were able to get our coaches involved. We were able to get teachers that ordinarily aren't teaching in the summer to say, you know what, this is an area I'm passionate about and I would really like to come and do something with the kids. So we really, you know, we're hoping to do the same thing this year. We're going to do another survey of teachers. Not only are we asking for availability so that we can plan for the most, you know, cover the most ground, but also to see what other ideas do people have out there that are in our school community, that they're passionate about, they can bring to the table and really get kids excited. We have such a gorgeous facility at the high school. We really wanted to showcase that. We were able to do it last year. So we're hoping to do that again. And on top of that, the Community House is partnering with us again and they are offering more spots to our students, grades K through four. And it's a full day. I think they're going to do four or five days a week. They're extending the time period. And the grant they apply for will be two consecutive summers. So we really will, will get more kids in. Again, we can be very selective and make sure that we're really offering this to students who need it, students who have a demonstrated need, as well as just, you know, families that are really interested in making sure that their kids are continuing learning over the summer. So I think, you know, I'm excited about what we're doing for the summer. And as we firm that up, we expect probably in May, we'll be able to give you a presentation that only focuses everything that we've
So that's a little preview of what's to come. To comment to that, I think here is that we have teachers that are really interested during the summer. As you can see, the staff is really working hard on planning too. So we want you to know that, you know, we care for our kids and we, again, are passionate about making sure they all succeed. If you have any questions about any of the programs, you can email us. We will be doing a presentation probably in May for you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, everyone. So a few things. Senior night is coming up. This week, we have girls' basketball and girls' hockey. You're all invited, obviously, to my senior night on Saturday, five o'clock. Please come. Girls' basketball also has their senior night this Friday at five o'clock, or six o'clock, sorry. Today, we have Connecticut State Representative Trinie Nagy visit West Haven High School. She came to tour the school and visit all of our facilities. She was interviewed by the rostrum and the interview will be aired on tomorrow's news. And as most of you know, the dental van comes to the high school Fridays, but due to high demand, we will now have a dentist and dental hygienist in our school-based health center. We also have a new partnership with Yale. They're conducting a study that involves paying students to play video games after school. The video games will measure the students' knowledge on opioids, dangerous opioids and opioid dependence.
So we had Ayanna Obas last week that won the third Congressional District Award for Senator Murphy's NOK Essay Challenge. And there's also a new club at West Haven High called West C's Walk Club. This club meets twice after school and is advised by the nurse practitioner as well as the gym teacher, Ms. Moore-Joel. And some of the activities they do involve courses on nutrition and exercise as well as games that will get their body moving.
So before we go to board reports, I'm sure you may have all heard already that we had a sad loss to the West Haven community and to the Board of Education last week with the passing of Julie Payne. So I would like to ask for a little bit of silence in her honor. She has served many, many years as a Board of Ed Chair, as well as a member of the Board of Education and volunteering her time all around the city. So I'd ask for a little bit of silence in her honor. All right, that was a hundred percent worth of that because it's also a good segue that I wanted to bring up. I think that that was a huge contest and the placement was incredible with that, the thousands of entries that were submitted. I couldn't be prouder of that we had a student from West Haven that I have. Please extend my congratulations to her from the Board of Education. It made me think of a conversation that I have had with several high school coaches about student spotlights. We have so many students that achieve really great things after high school, whether it's in the service or in the trade, the trade schools or trades and in college acceptance and that. But we really, really love to see more of those publicized. Even if there's a football player that is not going to play football in college but got accepted to Wesleyan or Central, I think that's even, if not even as important, if not more important, than students that are going to be playing sports in high school. That even if you're not going to play sports in high school, there's an opportunity for you outside of the sports arena. And I think we send so many kids to so many great places and they do so many good things. I would love for the community to see more of that. So they can realize that, hey, I should be wanting to send my kids to West Haven High School. It shouldn't be, you know, prep schools and, you know, private schools and all that. Obviously, if kids have, you know, make their own choice, that's one thing. But I want them to know that we can compete at every level, in sports, in academics, in clubs, in activities, in excelling in staff. So if we could do more of those student spotlights for kids in certain, you know, all the school population, I would love to see that on our website and on our social media. I could speak to a girl from Yale. I probably would have brought it up if I had to do that. Because I think everyone in the city should know about that. Like, that was amazing. I would love that. I think that would be great. If she wanted to read her essay here, that would be fabulous. She's off the meeting. Yeah, that's an incredible honor and she must have worked really, really hard on that. So we would love to hear it. Maybe we can get it published on our website. I don't know if she has it copyrighted. Now that this is what you got to say, but I would love to be able to share it with them. Excellent. I'm going to go and read it tonight. Thank you so much for pointing that out. That was really all I had. Only that, you know, other than the loss of the West Haven community, a personal loss. Toni was a mentor and a friend and guided me in the first few years that I was off the Board of Ed and she will be dearly missed. That was all that I had before I could write. So I will ask for an approval of minutes. You'll see a new copy under this, only because the change is only that the German name was different. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Second, all in favor? New hire twenty-two dash zero two. I'll entertain a motion. Second, all in favor? I know language teachers are not very easy to come by, so I'm very glad to see that. Very glad to see that. On our new business, we have twenty-two dash zero three field trip permission for for the West Haven High School dance team, who, by the way, achieved this year at football gigs and think that they're probably the best I've ever seen. I love their performance. And I do see that this is in the audience. If anyone has any questions about the field trip.
What I emailed, is that what she had?
Yeah, there's a very detailed explanation.
Yeah, everything is in there. The only thing that is new, that's added, I would say, are that we have several parents that are also going to be joining us. I have four dance moms that are going to be staying overnight and a few dance dads as well.
Sounds like an excellent opportunity for them.
It's really great. The best part, I think, is the convention, which is the last day of the competition weekend. So they can take classes in all different genres of dance. And they are, the instructors come from all over the United States. They also give out scholarships at the competition and the convention. So it's an excellent opportunity for our students.
Even better. Excellent. I will entertain a motion to approve the field trip. I will entertain a motion to approve the field trip. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any of those? Enjoy the trip.
Thank you.
Keep us updated on how they did. I think that was the last. Guess that was the last page, you'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?